I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
First off, we have approved the agenda.
Madam President, I approve the agenda as presented with the following amendments. Additional certified and classified personal actions for consideration, item E-3.
Is there a second?
No second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, same side. Motion passed. And we will move on to some recommendations. And the first one we have is for the spelling bee.
I think we have Mr. Scott here.
Okay. I'm going to cut this mic back there.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to take this time to recognize Alyssa Lemmons. She is currently an eighth grade student at Kenneth Henderson Middle School, and she is the Finney County Spelling Bee Champion. I believe there were forty or so contestants, and she will compete at the state spelling bee in Wichita, March 26th. So we're very proud of her.
Congratulations. Question for comments? Somebody, I'm sure we all heard what the winning word was.
Petrifying.
Okay. I'm probably going to try to spell.
I got, honestly, I got lucky because some of the other words I could not spell.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good luck at state.
Can we shake your hand?
Congratulations.
Good job.
Congratulations. Thanks for being here, Mr. Scott.
Good to meet you.
Did you help her personally?
No.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have a building presentation from Buffalo Jones.
Good evening, and thank you for having us here this evening. Rather than me talk about the wonderful things at Buffalo Jones, I have invited the students to do the sharing, and so they will introduce themselves and tell you why they find our school special. And, okay, so stand right there. Okay, so we have, Darren, you can go ahead and start.
Good evening, my name is Darren Key, and I am a third grader in Mr. Navarro's class. I am here to tell you that at Buffalo Jones, we have a mega change club sponsored by Mrs. Riggs, our librarian. We have students from second, third, and fourth grade participating in this club, which meets from eight to eight thirty AM one day a week. We are looking at ways to make positive changes at Buffalo Jones. One project that we have in place now is the recycling of paper. Each classroom has a recycling box, and they place the unwanted paper in there. We collect it every other week, and Mrs. Riggs takes it to the city recycling center. Another project that we are doing is identifying additional playground equipment. We will be looking at catalogs and selecting a location for the new equipment. We will then make this recommendation to the PTO for their final approval, as we will ask them to pay for it. Besides this, we also get to spend free time with each other and build cross-grade relationships, cross-grade level relationships. Do you have any questions?
Very good.
Thanks.
And these three right here, that's his little brother, and Azalia are also on the club, as well as others that are not able to be here. And then Mrs. Riggs is the one that sponsors the group.
What kind of playground equipment are you looking for?
I don't even.
Specific?
We don't know yet. We haven't done it yet, but we're kind of thinking about what. All we know is that we have to make it fun. Yeah. But make sure it's not a fast spinning mushroom. I watch the unridiculousness, it does not go well.
Thank you, Darren. You stand right behind you. And now, it's, uh, Jimmy.
Good evening, my name is Jimmy Lurio, and I'm a fourth grade student in Mrs. Riggs's class. I'm here to tell you that at Buffalo Jones, we have a sustained native language checking grades kindergarten to second grade. I started this program in kindergarten. The silly help me is I only spoke Spanish at the time. I learned reading, math, and writing skills in the kindergarten level, but in Spanish. I was able to learn English as my teachers used academic words, as well as conversational English during transition time with every system in my classmates. Science library, music PE, and counseling were in English. This helped me learn English. In second grade, I began to, I began to do reading, math, and writing in English. The skills and strategies I learned well in my Spanish class helped me make the transition to English. I am glad that I was able to be in the Spanish track because it made it easy to learn. Now I am in fourth grade, and I'm able to do everything in English and on grade level. I believe I'll be able to reach my dreams. Do you have any questions?
I will tell you that when he was practicing this with me this morning, he did it without reading the script, but I think his nerves got the best of him. He did a very good job.
I do have a question about that particular program, though. And you can answer it, but if you don't know, then maybe Mrs. Solis can answer. Do students who do the Spanish track tend to be on grade level and just as easily as the students that don't do the Spanish track?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Because I remember years ago, reading, or reading studies that said it's actually better that they do that, and so I just wanted to see what, what we see.
We have many of our students that have come from the Spanish track on grade level. There's a few due to learning, due to other difficulties. But most of them, by the time they're in fourth grade, they are successfully reading and writing, and of course, speaking in English very well. And you will be very successful having both languages.
Thank you.
Absolutely. And here's another one that will speak a little bit on that with some proof.
Good evening, my name is Emily Hernandez. Good evening, my name is Emily Hernandez, and I am a second grade student in Mrs. Castillo's transition to English classroom. I started in the sustained native language classroom in kindergarten. My sister, who graduated from high school, and my brother, who lives in high school, now also went to Buffalo Jones and run the sustained native language program. I'm glad to be able to speak in Spanish. It is great to be able to speak to my family in Mexico, as well as other families that live here and speak mostly Spanish. I speak read and write in Spanish and English, and it makes me proud to be my neighbor. Do you have any questions?
Great to share.
Yes, good job.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Azalia Mendoza, and I'm a fourth grade student in Mrs. Gerke's class. I am here to talk to you about the amazing work that our PTO is doing in our school. Every day, we have one to two parent volunteers come to our school and pop popcorn for a pickle popcorn sale. They support our school by providing a meal for our teachers at parent teacher conferences, and also giving students a gift bag of goodies, which include a T-shirt with school logo and book and snacks on Christmas. And also purchasing trees for our playground, and as well supporting fundraisers, such as raising funds for more playground equipment. And most importantly, donating money for our Garden City Community College Bovs scholarship. This scholarship is available to students that have attended Buffalo Jones during their elementary years and want to attend Garden City, Garden City Community College. This is just a small example of what our PTO is doing for our school. Do you have any questions? Thank you.
Good job. Well, that pretty much sums up our presentation. We just wanted to give you a glimpse of what we're about. I don't know if you have any questions, but we're here if you do.
I just have lots of prizes, you do a lot of great programs, and that's cool.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Thank you for supporting us, appreciate it.
Dr. Carolyn?
Before we, before we let them combine, shake hands. Are there any other staff members wrapped over from Buffalo Jones?
Yes, yes, thank you for, I would, I would like to recognize some of our staff that's here. Mr. Navarro, our third grade teacher that was mentioned in the presentation. Mrs. Loyah, our counselor, who also helped the students to prepare for the presentation and is a great support to all of our school as a counselor. I also want to recognize our parents, if you'll raise your hands. Thank you for allowing us to teach our kids. Alos papas.
Thank you, and then you're very good. There, well, no more, we have one more recognition. We've got somebody here who, how long have you been in the district, Raffiella?
Thirty-five years.
And twenty-five as principal?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight as principal, and-
Twenty-seven at Buffalo Jones.
Twenty-seven at Jones, shared with us right before Christmas that she will be retiring this year. I can't tell you how much we're going to miss you. I am going to tell a little story here. Fifteen, probably fifteen years ago, Raffiella invited Dr. Atha and I over to their accreditation visit at their school. And we had two amazing fourth graders. These guys kind of remind me a little bit of them, who were selected to give us their building tour. And they toured us around the whole school, did an amazing job. They, we asked them, how did you get selected to give the tour? And they told us they were the, the third, their third grade year, they scored the highest of any students in the school on their state assessments that year. Their English was amazing, and they were both students from the sustained native language program we learned. So it's not just here recently that you're getting some amazing results, that's been going on for a long time. And the leadership that you have provided there has been phenomenal. Thank you so much for all of you who do for Buffalo Jones, students and families in your school, you are amazing.
Good job, thank you. Good job, thank you. Good job, thank you. Thanks for, good job, very good job. Thank you. Hello, thank you. If I ever get back into the church, you guys, I'm going to pray. I love that, it's cool. Very good job. I love what you put in that Buffalo on there. Thank you.
Can we still get a picture?
Oh yeah, what, you know, team, just Raffiella, go. Can we do a picture with your students? Okay, we're going to get pictures of them right here. It's been so long, man, Fred.
I know. You can ask for pictures now. Right here. I set your papers from here.
Please, we need to get a picture too.
There we go.
All right, everybody right here, okay? Ready, one, two, three. Great, thank you.
Thank you guys, thank you. Okay, we will move on to the consent agenda.
Madam President, I approve the consent agenda as presented.
Were there some of them? Oh, that was off, that one. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, motion pass. And then we'll move on to our discussion items and our board goals update. Communications update is first.
Good evening, I'm Royce Sessner, I'm the public information coordinator for Garden City Public Schools. I have to lean over here, unfortunately. It's the communication vision to educate and provide for a high level of support from the community for Garden City Public, oh, from Garden City Public Schools. Through efficient and productive communications with all stakeholders, the district will be known for providing a quality education for all students and for being good stewards of the taxpayer dollars that we receive. The district will actively pursue two-way communication by listening to its staff and community to continually improve and evaluate communication efforts. Communication efforts will help our students be known for their educational excellence, for their community leadership, as you've already seen this evening, following the district's mission statement of quality learning, responsible citizens. Communications will help our employees also be knowledgeable ambassadors for the district, communicating key messages out to the community. So we have a number of different avenues that we use. We have media relations. Last year, we sent out news releases to various media, including the TV news stations, radio stations, as well as the Garden City Telegram and community agencies to get our word out about what was happening in the district. Last year, we sent out over two hundred and thirteen news releases. The newspaper wrote more in-depth articles, which they used sixty-eight of the news releases to write those articles that we sent out. They also published the majority of the news releases that we provided to get the information and media out to their viewers to provide what's happening in our, in our district. We also do three weekly radio interviews that run between ten to fifteen minutes that covers the events and activities and celebrations that are being held in the district to get the word out in, in a bigger and broader range. Public relations, the department provides advice on written and oral materials that goes out to patrons on various topics and issues, like you see on the screen here. We also are helping with the superintendent search on getting information and materials put together for the KASB to promote the district to potential superintendent candidates. We also invite the mayor and have invited him for events, as well as local representatives to participate and be part of our school and celebrations. Actually, the mayor is showing up to Georgia Matthews next week on March second to read a proclamation about Read Across America Day. He'll also be at one of our schools on March seventh to read a proclamation about National School Breakfast Week and the district that's coming up. So we also have community relations and communications. We inform, recruit, and promote community involvement in the district and schools, school events and activities that are taking place in the district. So like last week's Garden City High School play of Crimes of the Heart we promoted. Also, parent teacher conferences that are coming up this week. We also are promoting seminars, like the Garden City High School parent seminars that are taking place this year on various team topics that they want parents to attend. We also promote sporting events, as well as the district site council and what they're doing and working on for the district. We also promote, promote school site councils and getting parents involved in their schools. We also promote fundraisers, like the Freddy's fundraiser for Jenny Wilson that will take place tomorrow evening from five to eight, so please come out and support them. As well as, over the previous year, all of the COVID things like testing that took place before the start of the spring semester, as well as all the vaccination clinics and those types of things. We also send out information about the Early Childhood Developmental Screening Clinic that takes place each month at Garfield Early Childhood Center. We also post job postings out in the community, and we also promoted the job fair that took place on December fifteenth. Our department also coordinates crisis communication and maintains the crisis management plan for the district. We coordinate messages that teachers can read to their students and messages that go out to staff to keep them informed of what's happening, along with putting letters out and putting them together and then putting them out to inform parents of what's happening during a crisis. We also are the point for the media inquiries on a crisis in the district. We also coordinate our communication efforts with local and sometimes regional, depends on what it is, first responders. We also coordinate a debriefing of the school district and the first responders after an incident to see what worked and what didn't, and how we can improve our plans. In communications, we have a number of publications. The department puts out a weekly newsletter on events happening in the district on a weekly basis. Weekly newsletter, weekly basis, okay. Along with talking about celebrations, important issues that's going on, events happening in the district. Again, it's part of the communication that helps our employees be knowledgeable ambassadors out in the community about the district. We also put out a monthly dialogue newsletter of things taking place in the departments to keep staff abreast of what's happening in the district and those departments. We also maintain the school district's website on news, the events calendar, and other sites for more in-depth information to direct people to the site if they need more information than what we're putting out through the media. We also have a social media presence. We maintain Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram accounts. We also have a YouTube channel that airs the board meetings, and it's an archive of the school board meetings. Talking about social media accounts. Stop, hit the button. We do have, like I said, Facebook account. The last thirty days, we had seventy-one thousand people reached, thirty-three hundred link clicks, fifteen hundred comments, eighteen hundred shares on our various posts. And a typical post will reach anywhere from a thousand up to ten thousand people. On Instagram, we have thirty-two hundred people that we reached in the last thirty days. Twitter, it was sixty thousand impressions, and the number of times tweets are seen as an impression. And we had two hundred and seventy-five link clicks on certain posts that we sent out. Our biggest shares, views, and comments are actually for snow days. On our Facebook page, we had thirty-one thousand nine hundred and eighty-five people reached. We had three thousand seven hundred and eighty-three engagements, twenty comments, and four hundred and thirty shares on our last snow day. So, big presence, you know. And then the other duties that are assigned for our department, so I'm keeping it within my ten minutes, like Dr. Carolyn told me. We coordinate and facilitate a number of events and activities to help the school district and students and staff be known for their educational excellence and for their commitment, and, and for the community being known for our mission of quality learning and creating responsible citizens. We coordinate the Garden City High School Hall of Fame, which inducts two Garden City High School graduates each year to be positive role models, not only for the graduating class for this year, for 2022, but also for the entire student body. Two every year, one locally and one out of town. That really tells everybody that you can be successful when you graduate from Garden City High School. You can be successful here locally, or you can go on globally and be a success. And once a Buffalo, always a Buffalo. We also coordinate the Garden City Public Schools Foundation, which is a nonprofit charitable fund supported by private individuals, businesses, and other organizations who seek to provide resources beyond tax funds to stimulate excellence in our school district. The foundation offers the opportunity to enhance the learning environment, increase effectiveness of instruction, and to help strengthen, actually, actually to strengthen and broaden the ties between the school district and the community, which it does a pretty good job in. I also chair the Garden City Area Chamber of Commerce Crystal Apple Awards Committee, which promotes teachers and teaching in Finney County. It also demonstrates that the business community's commitment to supporting local educators is very strong, and it actually shows that we're helping to bridge that gap between business and the school district and promoting teaching, and it also shows that we're preparing future leaders for our community. We also facilitate the annual staff dinner that recognizes staff that have served the district after ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, thirty, thirty-five, and yes, even up to forty years in the district. We also recognize those who are retiring after their dedicated service to the district and education. We also coordinate events like American Education Week, which celebrates our great schools and the partnerships between teachers, support staff, students, parents, and the community as a whole. And again, it goes back to helping our students and staff be known for their educational excellence and for the community leadership that we present and following the district's mission of providing a quality learning setting and creating responsible citizens. I think that was under ten minutes, right? All right. That's my update.
Questions?
I was going to ask about the GCPS foundation.
Yes.
Can you describe a little bit more like the funding levels and determine what those you use for?
We have an application process that we send out. We have mini-grants that we've been doing for the last nineteen years. So we send out applications for that, and for teachers to enhance their classroom. We have a committee of three that sits on the committee. And we have a teacher that helps us, because some of us laypeople don't know what's, you know, what does this do, you know? And we determine, we provide five mini-grants each semester up to a thousand dollars, so it's two hundred dollars for each mini-grant, and we have five of them. That goes out to those teaching staff to enhance the classroom. Sometimes, through those grant applications, we get some pretty neat projects. You start seeing kind of a trend, so we'll fund some of those other things that we see, that we're seeing a trend from teachers asking a lot for, so we do that as well. We also support the Crystal Apple Awards banquet through the foundation. We also support buying books for the Books on the Bus, the Bookmobile, so we've done that. So it's really providing that extra little additional educational push through the foundation, and that's that mission of what we're doing, is providing that excellence to our educational staff. Okay, yes?
I just have a question about the people reached via the social media. Because I noticed that some schools have individual Facebook sites and then the district. So when, when we look at seventy-one thousand people, is that like the main USD four-five-seven, or is that?
That's the main USD four-five-seven site.
So some of those other individual school sites, they may have their own hits as well too. And do you do that, or do the individual schools?
Individual schools do that.
Do their individual sites, okay.
But a lot of the individual schools use the information that we, they share the information that we have, especially like the snow days and that type of thing.
Right, right, okay, thanks.
Yes?
Just a quick question on how the foundation is endowed. I'm not sure I've wrapped my mind around that. Is that just, is there a base? And then is it gifts from the community?
So when we started the foundation back in two thousand and four, it was Mr. Lentz, when he was the superintendent, wanted to start a foundation to provide that funding mechanism, as well as that bridge the gap between the school district and the business community and people in the community wanting to donate to the school district. So he wanted to create a foundation. So instead of going through the whole- So, instead of going through the whole process, which takes a long time to create a four oh three, or a four oh, whatever the process. Yeah, no, it's not four oh. Five oh one C three, thank you. Five oh one C three. Um, we actually partnered with the Western Kansas Community Foundation, um, when we're under Darren Burla. So, we use them as our, 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 uh, our base, and they take care of all the paperwork and.
They're the fiduciary managers of it.
Right, that is correct.
Okay.
So, we go out and we act like, we act like a regular foundation, but we use their services, um, to help us instead of going through that whole mechanism. Now, we've set it up where, um, we do have a permanent fund and then we have a non-permanent fund. Um, so if we do go out to, one of these days, if we get big enough to start a four oh three B, we can do that. But, uh, those funds will stay there for educational needs for eternity.
Okay, thank you.
And so we, and, so we, uh, partner with them on various events and activities like match day. Uh, we, uh, work with them on match day and have been successful on those things. Um, then we also have, under the foundation, a number of other, um, we've set up a number, a number of other, um, um.
Sub-accounts or?
Well, yes, sub-accounts. Uh, the Buffalo Leaving Legacy Fund is under our account. Uh, we also had the, uh, High School Brick Fund when it was kind of up and going, still there, it's just kind of a sub-account. So, we could set up, uh, sub-accounts under our account, uh, through, um, through a contractual agreement. So, it doesn't take a long time to set those up. They just have to come to the foundation board, we approve that. If it's something that we see is fit, that makes our mission, we can, we can do that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
Sure.
Well, thank you. I know your job is to get stuff out in the community and the public, but what you do behind the scenes, I don't think anybody really understands how much time you put into that, so, thank you for that.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Colleen, you ready? District Purchasing Handbook.
Alright, so tonight I'll be reviewing the district's purchasing policy and procedures handbook. I'll just highlight a few items and then, um, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. So, one of the first, uh, items is on page two of our handbook. Um, it reviews the objectives of the handbook, so, and of our purchasing policy. So, always consider first and foremost the interest of the school district and to support the established policies. Be receptive to counsel from associates, to buy without prejudice, always seeking to obtain the maximum value. To continue to work for honesty in buying, to denounce all displays of unethical practice. To be courteous to those who, with whom we do business. To recommend and apply standardization principles on supplies, materials, and equipment, whenever practical and in the best interest of the school district. And to respect our obligations required by the law as well as appropriate business practices and to require those with whom we do business to respect our policies. So, as page, uh, two of our policy states, we have purchasing objectives to consider and support first and foremost the interest of the school district. We have an obligation to our taxpayers to ensure responsible purchasing of supplies, materials, and equipment. On page three, as well as on page five, our policy outlines the requirements for bids to be completed on any purchases over ten thousand. The state's current guideline is to utilize a bid process for purchases that are over twenty thousand. We anticipate that this summer, when we do the approval of handbooks to the board, we'll be requesting for our, uh, to align with the state standard of that twenty thousand. Uh, this will help allow our repairs and purchases to be completed in a more timely manner and it also has the potential of cost savings for the school district. While we do want to award the bids to the local companies, our policy does state uh, that the bids must be awarded to the lowest bidder and that the price must be first and foremost in that consideration. Our policy then also un- outlines several of the, uh, requirements concerning our credit card and purchasing. We have some signed, um, agreements in here as well, here a little bit later. I won't, uh, belabor the process with going through all of these. There's quite a bit of information here with what we do with, uh, purchasing and purchasing cards and procedures. Um, lost or stolen cards, billing errors, um, signed agreements. Um, and then also you received the state's, uh, competitive bidding guidelines. It also talks a little bit more specifically about the twenty thousand dollar requirement on bids and then the process that we must go to, to send the bids out. How, um, in the business office, we maintain the, um, bid list and we usually handle all of that communication and oversight of all of the bids and the collection, um, as well as receiving the, um, sealed bids, um, in that process. Um, I'd be happy to answer any questions, if you guys have any.
One of the things you mentioned was trying to align our district with the state from, I think our, our is ten thousand and the state is twenty.
Yes, sir.
How many purchases a year would that affect, or bids a year, I mean?
I?
Would it be a big number or a small number?
I'd have to go back and look, just to kind of give you an idea. If I had to ballpark it, I'd say it, over twenty, maybe close to forty. Just depending on how many bids we have. Um, there is a fluctuation between the years, but I can, uh, write that down and give you an accurate number. Any other questions?
And how often, um, just kind of an add-on to that, I guess, so, the bidding process, what's the timeframe? From the time you put it out there, you receive bids, you evaluate, and you award the company that wins the bid. I mean, from, you're talking about streamlining some things, making things happen faster. What's that process, that timeline?
Um, uh, the, the quickest I've seen of a turnaround is two to three weeks. Um, typically, it's a, about, at least a month, um, but it also depends on the scale of the project. Um, so like any of our HVAC projects, obviously that's a much lengthier process, the, the bid document and the preparation behind that. Um, as well as the timeframe to give the companies to then review the project, gather their drawings, um, materials and all of their quotes, uh, can sometimes take a couple of months. Um, so, really it, it depends on the range of the project. Um, we had a couple of technology, uh, bids that came together in about three weeks from the send-out process to bids, um, due to then going to the board, uh, for approval. But not all are, I mean, those were the, the fastest ones that I've seen ever turn around.
Um, so you mentioned the one update that you intend when we re-improve handbook. This said that it's adopted in oh-three, so are we gonna look at anything else or is that the only update that you are anticipating?
Um, there could be others as I go through the handbook thoroughly and review, um. You know, as a new financial officer, it just takes some time to work through some of those processes. So, I really want to make sure I have a good perspective, a holistic perspective on, um, everything before. That is one of the big ones that we seem to keep getting hung up on, um, and of course, we want to keep it consistent with the state. Um, so that's one of the big ones. It was actually updated in, uh, the twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen school year. Um, but the two thousand and three, that's, I believe, was when it was originally this whole document, but there's been updates and revisions since then.
Okay, so we probably just need to fill that in, 'cause I know some of it, they do the update and put it on there, but.
Sure.
We're just, we're talking about policy right now, so I just kind of wanted to kind of get your, absolutely, your feedback on that, thanks.
Is there anybody else? Work?
No, I, I mean, I, if we want to play this stump-the-FO game. We can try, but, I, I appreciate, I mean, there's a lot involved here and it sounds like we're gonna be doing some more, um, review here soon, so. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.